Those licenses get suspended until the tenth, yeah. So he's gotta make that money. He's gotta make that money.
Broco.
Lawrence. Passo. Here. Gibson.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Dees. Nelson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval amendments for November meeting.
Motion.
Passo. Dees. Lawrence. Gibson. Nelson.
Yes.
Cassidy's not here today, so we won't be doing that. New business. Any ordinance?
Mike.
Oh, Mike.
Well, you know, we're on the process as far as are we going to change that like they did in the last three dryer? I know David Sonics has started, but it's, I think, you have a copy of it also. Well, I have made a copy for you.
Mike?
I just wanted to, you know, I guess if we want to set it up and how to do the process from now on, I'm sure it's fair and right.
Yep, I, Mike, if we want to do that, it has to be done for each specific property. Otherwise, we go to the default, which is still bid only. So if we want to use that process that you were talking about with the ordinance that you previously sent me a month or so ago, we've got to do it beforehand. So if we want to sell a piece of property and we want to use that format, that process, we need to pass a specific ordinance to that effect for that piece of property.
Okay. So, you know, I'm this, I'm this one person, I don't care how, how they want to do it, I just want to make sure we do it fair and equal.
Ju- just, just the next time we sell a piece of property, we just need to remember that if we want to do it with that process, we specifically draft an ordinance for it that way.
Okay.
Okay?
And the board accept it?
Thank you.
And the board, yes, that's true, and the board approves it.
Okay.
Uh, special meetings?
Yeah, I put that on air. Uh, I tend to agree with the folks who mentioned at the last special meeting we had that if we coinci- we have a special meeting that coincides with a committee meeting. I'm just talking about the rest to be paid for the special meeting too, to probably being paid through committee meeting. My motion is we do not get paid for a special meeting if it coincides with committee meeting.
Second.
And then Dees.
Yeah.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Passo.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yes.
The status currently charged for police services in Toby.
I had asked DJ if he could, uh, actually I called you first. Said if we have a contract with them because what I was going to see was whether or not they would be helpful enough because we gave the police officers some references and we were getting seven hundred dollars a month, would they be interested just to kind, to maybe pay eight hundred dollars a month? If we had a just a contract and I didn't know when that contract ended, nor did I want to ever have it to where they don't want to have the contract anymore either. So that's when I contacted you and so, I don't, just curious what you found out.
So, I mean, apparently they pay seven hundred, in my opinion, I think it's pretty good where it's at. I don't see, I don't see why would we go to them right now. Uh, we had issues when we first took over there, but the main issues over there are kind of real. So the calls for service in Toby are very minimal.
I mean, I, I think it's, it's fair also, I mean, that's my opinion, so.
Yeah, definitely.
That's perfect, thank you. DJ, we're looking at that part.
Thank you. Uh, old business, variation system.
This is just the status on the bounty. How we got any more donations is gonna happen or do I need to give everybody what they donated back?
I haven't heard any more on the whole, for some reason, I'm starting talking, I haven't heard any more complicated. We're not going to, uh, move forward with this, I think the money should be introduced after people have donated.
Is that the case? Yes. All right, do we need to make a motion? I motion that we give everyone that donates to the areas and says we give the money back and we'll try to get some other time.
I see.
Thank you.
Dees.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yeah.
Passo.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Uh, this is the next thing, this Christmas bonus, that's gonna go to have an implementation.
Why?
It doesn't get discussed.
But shouldn't that be?
What, discussing one, discussing one.
There's a specimen one employee.
That's why.
So it's a specific employee.
Specific employee. Hiring part-time police officer.
So we have, uh, right now, we have one qualified candidate. Uh, training standards board just approved him over in Thayer, so I know he'll get passed for us also. I've done the background check, I've followed up with other departments that he's worked at. Uh, he is qualified, he's not here today. And it's Tim Solomon, I, he, I think most of you guys met him at the last, last board meeting. Uh, he said he can put in some part-time hires here, uh, especially on the weekends where we're kind of lacking right now. And, and more nights, so.
Yeah, we already, um, we had DJ, we talked a little bit about that last time.
Yeah.
We, uh, December, January, first of the time, uh, excuse me, what was it? Have we had a good circuit yet?
No, I've not been given the exact date when he's going to Thayer at all.
He was hired in ten, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but I, uh, I would, again, um, I would like to, we're something, I'd like to make a motion off on hiring right now until Tyler comes back and is, is faced with the ability to keep game.
So he, he has leave, uh, milli- he, he's back Friday, but that, he's not coming back here Friday. Uh, since he is on orders for six months, he'll be, he'll be gone even longer. Uh, he'll still be on military orders, but he'll be on, so we still won't have anyone here um, that can, that can cover for us while he's gone. My opinion is, say Tyler comes back for a month or two, we just don't give hours. You know, we have, we still meet that cap on the hours that we're working. Uh, and then that gives me time also to get the training standards board to do their investigation and to approve Tim, uh, to work here because there will be a time gap between when he's hired and when he can actually work the street.
I still make a motion that we don't want until Tyler comes back. It's my motion is for me till Tyler comes back and make sure that, again, they need us, we need us for this, sign certification here and, uh, and then bring them through there, I'll bring someone in. That's my motion.
How long does it usually take for you to do the training and standards board?
Any, anywhere from a week to, it could be a month, month, month and a half.
I mean, we're getting hired, it ain't like.
We're putting your work.
Putting your work, maybe you're bringing up the hours, but we don't have the least presence now, so. I mean, like you're paying Tyler full-time, the way it is anyway.
My, my, my only concern is, once again, you know, we are paying an officer that's not putting hours in for us and, and right now, we don't know exactly when he's gonna come back. Our, that's kind of, that, I, I'm on board with hiring a part-time police officer. What I'm not on board with is paying for the police and not have everybody on board. That's my only issue, or I would, I would say, yes. I mean, I wish we could, and, and if that meant tabling until we found that out and then we found out that Tyler came back and his last day is gonna be December twenty-fifth, then we all move forward, we know how we're gonna move forward. That, that's my only holdup, but that's just me, that's just my only, I don't, I won't support it if we're still paying somebody that we don't have and then we push this guy away and then we don't have anything. Well, I asked, I asked if we were, if we were indefinitely.
Yeah, but you asked him this meeting, that's what you asked him.
So are we saying that now? I, I don't, we don't know, I mean.
We don't know, that's why we're waiting on you guys.
That's why I make a motion that we don't want to hire anymore until Tyler comes back and finishes up completely here. And then if the team is still available, then we move forward, he has to have here, that's my motion.
I'm gonna second it. I will second.
You guys can't find a police officer, you can't tear one down.
Yeah.
Passo.
No.
Gibson.
No.
Warren.
Same.
Dees.
No.
Nelson.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Yes.
I'm making a motion to hire him. How, how soon is he going to start? But I mean, but we didn't know for sure.
Oh, geez.
We didn't know for sure.
That's all right.
If you give him hired, you're not saying that we have to give him hours.
No, we don't have to give him hours until we, until Tyler gets his job or we have hours. I mean, I have some time, I, I'm gonna have more vacations on January first. I mean, there, there's time that we have coming up.
Okay, all right, now that I understand that, okay. Okay, all right.
Detail the motion, hire.
I'll second.
Correct?
Yeah.
Passo.
Yes.
Dees.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Now, when he puts on the cable now that he has to get the, how to tell Tyler comes.
We're hiring him. That's the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Warren.
Who's staying?
Can you come over here?
Yes.
There, there. Okay, discuss upcoming purchase of back truck and street sweeper.
Okay, so we are, we, we are all in agreement that we need new, a new back truck, that we need a new street sweeper because what we have is in poor shape. Uh, we did send Dallas and Tommy over to look it over and they assured us it is a good quality. They're both of good quality and that they have, um, replaced the back pump for the back truck and has done a certain amount of improvement on it. The problem coming out of finance committee is that we are having a general discussion how to pay for this. It's not that anybody's disputing that we don't need the equipment, but exactly how we're gonna pay for it. Whether we're gonna use some money that we are waiting to come back from EPA uh, through Chastain's that will go to the general fund.
Direct to the water fund.
Water fund. Uh, and right now, that fund is in need. Uh, but also that we know that we need the, the back truck is a imperative thing so we can dig our own potholes and save ourselves forty-five thousand dollars from having somebody else to come in and scope out for lead pipes. Right, Marty? Okay, so the, the issue lies, not with the need, but the issue lies with how we're going to pay for it. Between getting money from Chastain's and the EPA versus whether we want to use, we're having a, a CD that is coming due in, next week.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And taking that money and applying it towards the purchase price, which would give us half. And, and my concern, as I think it is for Kip and everybody else, we don't want a cash-strapped village with having to go and get a loan from the bank at eight percent and pay huge, uh, huge monthly payments of, of upwards of twenty-five or three thousand dollars.
Okay, how many CDs, how many CDs we have?
Four.
Four.
We have four.
And how much, how much each one of them?
It sounds like we're poor, so I agree.
We had close to a half a million dollars. Five hundred thousand.
So why, why won't we just?
Well, hang on, hang on, there's more.
Okay.
Miss, Miss Barrett, there's more.
Okay, so the, the issue we're having is that we make a good amount of money off CDs and, and that's always big for the village. Um, but we also know that we are looking at with the, uh, the sewer of water renovation, what, at a future payment of, correct, I'm wrong, eighty-five hundred a month?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand a year.
Be like forty-eight.
Yeah.
A month.
So it's still, you know, we don't, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we've got ten thousand dollars going out every month on a payment. And, you know, that's where our conundrum lies in that some of us think that it's better to take that CD that's gonna come due and use it for, to cut back on the payment and also, um, also then if we get money back and it goes, comes into the water fund or it goes into the general fund, we can eventually at some point perhaps recruit some of the, or put that money back into a CD at some later date, is that correct, Beverly? Okay, so that's where we stand.
And we just, and, and basically when the finance committee had, had met to get together to try to figure out different options, we knew that getting a loan with somewhat ridiculous eight percent wasn't gonna be an option. So we wanted to try to find out other different options, but also making sure that all the other board members are all on board with us getting these two pieces of equipment before we try to figure out exactly, you know, how we're gonna move forward. And I think that's the most important thing right now. We have, we have closer to two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars coming sometime within the next sixty days from Chastain and Associates. We did find out what that number is. So I, I would recommend as far as the finance committee that we, A, we don't ever borrow money, ever, if we don't have to, if you got cash to pay for it. And, and secondly, I don't think we ever need to get into the habit of cashing in CDs. You know, I just think that's a bad habit, I think you need to have that, that money over there and not say, let's do this and borrow back and pay because what's gonna end up happening, we're gonna run into January and then we're gonna have something else come up and say, well, I guess we're not buying. I, I just, I, I don't think we need to do that, I don't think we need to do that in the middle. I think that's a nice comfort zone. As a matter of fact, I like the CD bigger, to be honest with you. But with all that being said, we can make that two hundred thousand dollars of equipment happen without having to borrow money and without having to cash in a CD. We just need to make sure that all the other board members are on board with us.
And, and also.
Because that's, that's a purchase of the finance committee.
At this point, I just, Marty, I'm questioning you, can you please inform us, we didn't get a chance to finish, but can you inform us what the outcome was of the, sending the two guys over to look at the, the equipment?
Yeah, there was, um, the back truck, it only has a hundred and eighteen thousand miles on it. Or eighteen thousand miles, no, eighteen thousand miles. Uh, they, they, they just got it on CRAM from another, it is paddling. They put a new main pump on it. Um, all new hoses. Did some, uh, little patchwork inside the, inside the hopper and recovered it. Then the sweeper, sweeper, all new freshes, belts, um, everything, all the working parts in there are brand new.
And they did, they refurbished.
Yes, and the, uh, the back truck, actually doesn't have a hydro kit to do pothalling, so they're putting their, adding that, they're putting that all on, that's all gonna be granted there, the hydro kit's gonna be all right there. So.
And that's what we need to be.
That's what we need to do, uh.
Draw.
The pothalling for invest, you know, or investigating for future grants and all the lead service funds we're getting ready to do. Um, and that was, that, that, on the, the next phase of the project, that was having a company come and do that was forty-five thousand dollars on that project. So doing our, having two guys do it ourselves is essentially save that forty-five thousand on the next phase of the project.
We can also use that pothole for, when you get one ring breaks.
Yes, we can use all our ring breaks and.
Always, you do stuff, yeah.
So where did our thirty thousand dollar grant money that you got for the floodlights service go?
Engineer.
I, I think my only problem was, and that's why I wanted to hear more from the board, how they felt about spending that kind of money, because I, I kind of, a little bit taken back that, you know, would we be, would we be in the same situation three years down the road that we are in now? That we have pieces of equipment that would only work for, I, I don't know enough about it. You know, so, and that's, it's a heck of a, a lot of money to be, be putting out, you know, um, I, I was just, we, we can make it happen with the money. We can ma- we can make that happen. We just need to, I think, we need to find out if everybody's on board with us moving forward with that.
I don't, I don't think anybody's in favor of always cashing a CD, that's not our first option. But three thousand dollars a month payment is not an option to me either. You know, because I think when you add that and the, the other payments we're gonna have coming out of the sewer of water. And it all has to be done. I mean, we're committed to this sewer of water renovation and, I mean, we have to have.
Everybody has all. Everybody's on board with it, I think that we can.
I mean, maybe we, we ask the question of each other, I mean, I don't know how the board, because you know it's about cashing in this CD that's coming due and applying it towards the, the equipment. How do you guys feel about that?
I don't, I don't want that, it don't make sense to go ahead at eight percent loan and, and we're only getting five percent on CD. And then that's.
Yeah, I feel worried.
That's a no-brainer.
Loan's on your own table.
And I said, if we have some money in the CD or we got the money coming back in from Chastain.
I mean, the option I said, anytime, I think we have to find ourselves with a few extra points, we will buy it towards the CD. And that's, I mean, that's just common sense and we do that anyway. Trying to be as efficient as we can. Um, but I also know that, that, you know, and I believe me, I'm no expert, but I think the, the equipment does need to be replaced. That street sweeper looks like a, a rolling death cam, you know?
Much more work to.
But to answer Kip's concern, we even, we're in this now because we haven't done this in the past. We ran the equipment until it died and then all of a sudden we had to buy something.
And then on the left side is, every time they go to use that equipment, as, as Mark and as Tommy has told me, you know, if we're gonna use it, if we're gonna use it on Wednesday, it takes Monday and Tuesday to get it ready to go, well, you're burning up the time to management there, you know? So I mean, if we're, we're losing money on the equipment anyway.
And I got my other, my other PR owner, drop his, his, his permit sold for fifteen thousand dollars to make it.
How much money did we always wanna get back from Kip?
Two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
For sure.
Yep.
Wasn't that part of the?
Two, two checks, two, four.
That's part of the non-water fund.
Correct.
Yeah, two hundred and eighty-one thousand goes to the waterfront. That's I E P A loan. That is Chastain's engineering fees that is coming back to us and put into the I E P A loan, which has to be repaid in twenty years.
So that, that's what the, the.
I suggest that we cash this CD for a hundred thousand. When the two eighty-one comes in, we take a hundred thousand of that. I do not want to strap this waterfront.
No.
Because once this project is done, phase one, we are going to have to start making payments of eighty-five thousand dollars a year for twenty years. Wow.
Well, now the sweeper, it's definitely gonna be in the general fund, not, not water.
You don't.
Pardon?
The sweeper, it needs to come out of general fund, not.
Right, that's what you stated.
Not water, for sure.
That the vac can, some of the money can come out.
The vac can come out.
The vac can come out.
None have done all those.
It can be split between waters, so the, uh, sweeper needs to come out of general.
We just need a motion, guys.
And it's like, it's a package deal.
What kind of warranty for the equipment?
Uh, a year, right off, by a year on both of them.
Year on both of them.
I mean, sure.
Marty, make sure the little getting, we got, we got the other truck sold for fifteen thousand, eighty-five thousand for each piece of equipment. Basically.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
I think we just need to make sure that everybody's on board that we first say it and then we're gonna be, it's a, it's a no-brainer how we need to pay for it. It's a no-brainer.
Well, it's a, it's a package deal, the price, the price did total, um.
Two hundred and twenty-seven some of the things.
Two hundred and twenty-seven, and when I said we buy, we buy them both together, it knocked it down to two hundred. So you already came twenty-seven thousand dollars down for us, you know? Yeah, it's hard for.
On the paper, it says that the sub total was two twenty and the discount twenty.
Two twenty, that's, I don't.
Well, he gave us the two totals was like more than that, though.
Yeah.
I think, but neither or, the following conversation became that won't work with the CD and we'll do it for two hundred thousand.
What's this street sweeper getting during the summer?
Uh, spring and fall is the big times. Uh, summertime, um, when we do oil and chip, we pick up the excess rock for that, we get a little, little shoulder work with it. Uh, most time, it gets around, it gets around the spring and fall, it's pretty constant. Right, it's a package deal, though, we don't get the, we don't get the discount if we, if we don't. Yeah, I, well, I have asked you.
Plus our sweeper gone. What, what, what do we need to do here, folks?
We just need a motion.
Well, I don't know that everybody's. Um, so. Kim, are we all on board stepping this up?
I made, uh, I made the motion that we go ahead and we purchase those pieces of equipment by the use of the CD that is going to be coming due and the other money is, will be taken out of the EPA, Chastain, for one year. I'm sure I'm not that.
But then the social wants the money from EPA funds, which is not purchased for them.
And when we do that, we're buying another one hundred thousand dollar CD?
I can't say that right now.
Down the road again.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to record.
No, I mean, that's my motion that we purchase equipment by, I mean, uh, by breaking the CDs for the, the relic which he has a CD and, uh, matching that with money that comes from EPA loan and check. and matching that with money that comes from EPA loan in Chastain.
So then just, so the purchase won't, will cash in the purchase at all until that money come there?
Yeah.
No, no, because it just.
Cash in a CD?
Well, that might be. In simple, because we can let them know that that's the, the balance will become your CD.
Collecting the same four percent?
As soon as EPA money comes in.
Right, does it have, if they have, none have.
I don't, I don't like paying a hundred thousand.
We need a clear, precise motion.
That's what you done motion on tape, right?
I do it, but I will let it be amended by anybody who's got a better idea.
No, I, I mean, I think your idea is fine.
Well, it's just, yeah, give us, that, that money can. The, uh, well, the money to Chastain's, I think, goes to the, probably to the jail.
I'm sure.
So the other option we have is to, we, we have the CD out. Simply put, that money into our account pending purchase.
Hey guys, hey, we're conducting business here, okay? No, no talking after.
Does that sound okay? That we, if we relinquish the CD, we put the money in our general fund until such time that it, we receive the money from EPA through Chastain's and then at which time we purchase both pieces of equipment out and owe nobody anything. Is that motion?
Except for the EPA loan.
Gibson?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Lawrence? Lawrence? Dees?
Yes.
Passo?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Alright, visitors, a person shall be permitted to address officials of the rural family, which you can take three minutes to. Do you have any questions?
I just have a quick question. I'm at closed session with the Christmas bonus, so you guys can't make any decisions during the closed session, so is it going?
It's coming back out.
Okay, and then you're gonna just, okay, thank you.
Anybody else get a question, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, a few things here. Um, on the lead pipe, pipe grant and that, you gotta have a license of plumber on hand and of course Mark should know that.
Yeah, we.
First step.
They're not doing it. Call care hiring it out.
Pipe plumber then?
Yeah.
Okay, the second is, uh, when you guys had that, uh, closed bids on that house on Springfield Street? And when you opened it and you had the eleven hundred dollar bid and the two thousand dollar bid? My understanding is how come you guys didn't know that the higher bid should have took it instead of bidding it by a hundred dollars?
We are, we were, we heated that last meeting, we took it at the last meeting, but the process was that the two parties were aware that we were going to conduct it one way, but the general population was not. And so we go back and remedy it, we went back and followed the statute and the general bidding ordinance, not a specific ordinance. That was what Mr. Lawrence was, was talking about earlier. So we went back and did it as the regular bidding ordinance that the village has adopted.
Well, I was on board with two thousand where he took it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the third is the house on Springfield Street, uh, Lawrence? Use gun hole, I'm tearing it down, I'm just curious how come it's still standing?
Was the EPA ever out to test for asbestos?
Yes, they did, and there was a gun out and clean it and take.
So you guys have the report for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the public can see the report.
It was clean then, right?
We have it cleaned yet.
No, 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 there was no asbestos in there?
Deciding word, wasn't it? Yeah. The siding word.
Okay.
And environmental people are coming to get the siding off.
Oh, okay.
And then square. And then we're on track now. This is the contract we can get. We already hired them.
Oh, good.
Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, purple bill, movement.
Approval bill.
Nelson?
Cass.
Gibson?
Cass.
Passo?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Lawrence? Dees?
Yes.
Is that on the board?
Uh, pur, approval pressure report.
Motion, sir.
Dees?
Yeah.
Warren?
No.
Nelson? Gibson?
Yeah.
Passo?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Lawrence report?
I've given you all a copy of my report.
Police report?
So any of you guys have my copy? Obviously not listed was all the time we spent on ordinances in the last month. Um, is not included in that report.
Foreman's report?
Yep, we guys got a copy of that too. Uh, we didn't spend a lot of time on, on, trying to list it up and then couldn't spend a lot of time locating and locates for, for, you know, grew up and um, I've been spending most of my time with the, for crew and Chastain's, so, um, and, you know, we're just monitoring it, you know?
Attorney's report?
Just ordinance violations, and I think DJ just alluded to it, I think there's like seven or eight new ones that we just, uh, prepared. One is, uh, since been dismissed, we've removed the issue. Uh, the mayor told me to go ahead and dismiss it. Um, otherwise, they're all set for January fifteenth, uh, the Quinny to the DOM matter, which Mr. Wake, their attorney, uh, his attorney is involved. Uh, and the day before, or maybe the day out, the previous hearing, he sent to me a pretty empty letter. Uh, we're going over, um, but still in negotiations, which if necessary, will probably take place on the January fifteenth, we need to, uh, at a closed session.
Judge Gage report and comment, anybody got anything?
I do, mayor, for a couple of different things. Um, TJ, do we have the committee meetings posted up on the village report? We talked about the.
The groups?
Yeah, the groups.
Not yet.
Okay, alright, well, because I, all I, I didn't have to put it on the agenda because it's just gonna be strictly a reminder that each one of the committee chairs is to meet with their, uh, different departments so that we can do the action plan of two thousand twenty-five. We all agree that we report that, uh, our next meeting is committee's the twenty-third, okay? Also too, that I just wanted to mention, um, also the park committee, which is Danny and, uh, and Gary. If you guys wanna look at some dates to quite possibly do something as far as maybe fish at the park kitchen during Lent, maybe, I don't wanna be in competition with anybody, but uh, Easter's not until like late April, like the twentieth of April. So if you guys, I will help organize all that and work with you, you get a date set for that. It'd be nice if we get a couple of dates for the, for the park kitchen. So that's all I have, just the committee meetings to meet and it's gonna be posted on the village website. And our, our phone numbers are on there too for the, for the village if they wanna reach out and contact anybody, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Bear. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some, Mr. Bear, um, I got, um, Manny got some books back from Frank for the revised, uh, form of codes. We got the graphs, I have, we have seven copies. The trustees have picked the copies up that we leave today. In the front of the book, uh, there is a sort of ten page document. It's all highlighted and numbered that coincide with the numbers throughout the ordinance book. I need you guys to go through that, look at it, make sure you're, we're good with it. Uh, there's some comments in there that Frank made, that's some things that we need to do, some things that we did very well. And, uh, but I just need you guys to look at it for the next committee meeting, that way we can discuss it and then we can get Frank down here and we can get this staying filed like.
Thank you, Gary. Morrison, you can all get copies of that?
We will get them before we leave tonight.
Presidential report and comment? I don't know, just a second. Uh, where should we go in close second?
Motion.
Lawrence? Passo?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yeah.
Warren?
Yes.
Dees?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.